All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Homeland School District 153 for August 11th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bethay, Mr. Booth, Mr. Bosch?
Present.
Mrs. Popalka?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Scully?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman? We're present.
Mr. Booth here.
Oh. Hi, present.
Good evening, everybody.
Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of July 15th, 2025. Are there any edits or corrections to the minutes? Right? Motion?
A motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of July 15th, 2024.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Future dates.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about this during my report, but the big highlight, one week from today, teachers come back, nine, I'm sorry, yeah, one week from today, and then nine days from today, students come back. So, one week from Wednesday, we will be back in session for the 24, no, 25, 26 school year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have some presentations today, some school improvement plans for both Willow and Churchill.
Yes, so for the better part of last year, our staff at Willow and Churchill schools have been working diligently creating school improvement plans. That was a result of the targeted designation that both of those schools received from our previous school report card. And so, we're excited to be able to share kind of the fruition of all of that work. And it was a team effort. I'm going to ask each of those two principals to come up and talk a little bit about the process, and most importantly, the goals that were created and that we'll be working on for the next three years. Once you are designated as targeted, you're on that cycle for one year of planning, which we just completed, and then three years of actual improvement. So, we will be beginning this fall with year one of the implementation. So, at this point, I will invite up Tara Peacock, our Churchill principal, and she will talk about the plan for her building. Tara, welcome.
Hello.
And we're going to have you grab a microphone from Mr. Zinnerman's spot, so that way everyone at home can hear you.
I don't know, that's a little voice.
Do you want me to sit there and forward for you, Tara? Would that be helpful?
Yes, oh, man, that would be awesome.
Before we go forward, we do need a board secretary for this evening, since Ron is not here.
I nominate Jim Schmidt.
Happy to, happy to oblige.
Is there a second?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
No one wants a second? I'm okay.
I was put up to it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Absolutely.
Great teamwork, guys, great teamwork. All right, so I am Tara Peacock, the super proud principal of Churchill School, and we're going to kick off our school improvement plan for this year. Go on to the next one. When you think of a school improvement plan, you think, why? Why do we need it? Why now? Well, in 2023, 24, as Scott mentioned, Churchill receives a designation of targeted by the state of Illinois. Well, targeted for what? Well, this designation is due to the lack of growth amongst our students with an IEP or a 504 plan. Now, let me be clear, it's not that our students did not grow, they just did not grow as much as our students that do not have an IEP or a 504. Therefore, during last school year, we developed a plan to ensure that all students are growing, including our children with disabilities. So, when the state gave money, they wanted you to focus on your children with disabilities. And I put this picture up because it's going to impact all of our children. When you impact any population, it's going to impact the entire population. So, I wanted to put that there, and our Bulldogs, we are raring to go to carry out this plan. Members of the team are there, I know you guys are going to get a copy of the plan, but of course, it was our admin team, our MTSS coordinator, we made sure that we had two 4th grade teachers, three 3rd grade teachers, no, three 4th grade teachers, three 3rd grade teachers, two 5th grade teachers, and then we had an interventionist and a union representative. And we definitely put our heads together to come up with a great plan. All right, so first goal, typically with the state of Illinois, you can have anywhere to two to three goals. So, we focused on ELA, math, and attendance. These were the areas that our team thought we can get the most bang for our buck. ELA and math are a given. So, when we look at ELA, I assume nothing, so ELA is English Language Arts, and that's simply reading and writing. So, our goal this year and future years is to provide high-quality instruction to have 5% growth for children with disabilities, because that was our targeted group, on the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, IAR, and ELA student growth percentile using NWEA, Northwest Evaluation Association. Now, you know, in education, we love acronyms like any profession, but I think we have every profession beat because we have a gazillion. I put NWEA on here because our measure of academic progress used to be STAR. Well, STAR is no more, so this year, our students will take NWEA, and that will be our MAP testing, Oregon measure of academic progress. That's how we're going to know if our students are growing, and we take that test three times. So, then, in 2023, we had 50.13% of our students with disabilities grow in ELA. Well, we expect to see that score increase to 55%. So, Tara, how did the team decide to grow only 5%? Well, when we looked at our data from the past, we had dropped 5% from the previous year, and then the year before that, we had jumped 2 to 3. So, we thought if we lost 5, let's at least gain that 5 back, and then soar from there with some very small tweaks. We love to capture the low-hanging fruit. So, how will we grow? Let's go to the next one. So, these are highlights. Again, when you see the plan, it's like 13 pages, so I can't do that in 10 minutes, but I did want to hit some of the highlights. So, we're going to provide professional development and coaching of novice and veteran teachers. What we found is that within any profession, you've got skill versus will. Our teachers vary willing, but lack some skills. So, we already started off with three amazing trainings this summer for Bridges, our math program, Imagine Learning, our ELA program, and then we also did some co-teaching training for special education and co-taught teachers. We, instead of having one co-taught class per grade level, we moved to two. We also conduct, we will be conducting learning walks as a fidelity check for implementation of our high-leverage practices. And a high-leverage practice is simply a practice that's best practices, and it's proven to provide growth. So, we don't want to guess, we want to do what's proven, and so that's what we're doing. Resource time is provided to provide specialized instruction to help our children with disabilities meet their IEP goal. So, we're not just going to hope that they're growing, we're going to ensure that they're growing. We teach standard skills based on assessment data with flexible and fluid groupings, so we've done some training on that. And then communicate and share assessment data via forefront, reports sent out to families every six weeks in our new goal communication folders, and it will say what work to stay home and what work to come back. I got a lot of calls, parents, well, I don't know how my child is doing, what's going on. We're going to ensure that they know, because we are all a part of that village. So, let's go on to two. Math goal, provide high-quality instruction to have 8% growth for children with disabilities on IAR, as well as MAP growth on NWEA. So, again, looking at this data, we're looking at 33.75% of our students with disabilities, that's how many grew in math. We expect that to increase to 39. Again, how did you come up with this percentage? Well, we just increased it to make sure, where we looked at last year, it also dropped, so we want to make sure it goes up. All right, again, similar principles, just with different curriculum and different standards. So, you're going to see the same action plan, but different strategies used to help maximize the time. We can go on to the next one. All right, attendance, so we learned that in the state of Illinois, if you have a student that is absent more than 10% of the time, they are considered to be chronically absent. Now, one thing our parents did not know is that, but I called in, so it's excuse, it does not matter. The state still says they are chronically absent if they have been absent more than 18 days. So, we learned we have to communicate this to our parents, as well as some of our staff, and it was a learning curve for everybody. So, that's what we're focused on, we want to get that under 20%. By the way, the state average is about 15%, so we're not horrible, but we do have room for growth. Last part, so we revised our building attendance policy, we put some things in place to ensure that parents are getting phone calls, they're aware of the policy, and a lot of parents didn't fully understand that, so we had to explain the difference between absenteeism and truism, right? So, if someone is truant, it means they have not called at all, but if they're still absent, and it's more than 10%, then that is chronic absenteeism. We also want to incentivize and reward our Bulldogs who are there 90% of the time, so we're going to do some rewarding of homerooms, we're going to make positive phone calls, and we're going to give those reminders to our, our parents that just are not responding, okay? One other thing we learned, we shared, we can reach out to our regional office of education. And so, when a student has missed so many days, there's a form we fill out, and they jump on it right away. So, they really got to know Churchill this year, and, and it proved well, we had parents calling saying, please, don't, don't send anybody else out, they're coming. So, that was the desired goal. So, at the end of the day, we know that things have to be monitored. So, we will have monthly fidelity checks and day-to-day meetings each trimester to look at our students, regroup, change the plan, tweak it as we go, so that we can improve. But we have to monitor it, and that's what we plan to do. Right? Thank you.
One question.
Yes.
Just for a point of clarity, the, the decrease that occurred from last year to this year, is that number taken just from that subgroup or the total student body that took the test?
So, we looked at total student body first, because we saw the overall decrease, and then we honed in on our children with disabilities. And what we found is that the children with disabilities dropped even more. However, we got to the, to the crux of it, the schedule, the previous year, so 21, 22, there were more minutes for ELA and math. When we got to 22, 23, they had changed it, minutes dropped. So, then, when the scores came out for 23, 24, it's no wonder that it dropped. So, those were some of the low-hanging fruit, we could change right away by adjusting our schedule, making sure we've got all teachers off at the same time, so they could collaborate. We know John Hattie's List always talks about teacher efficacy, student efficacy, well, teachers need that time to collaborate, and so we made that change as well.
Got you.
Does that help?
It helps.
Other questions? Yes?
Are you considering the fact that we're teaching?
We are, we are. So, a couple things we're doing, the way we organize our schedule, and I got some calls today, we made sure that we have children with disabilities in all of our rooms, because everybody doesn't need a co-taught teacher or an aide to class. We also made sure we had our enrichment students in every classroom. And what we're doing is we're teaching our, our teachers, we've already started, on how to group based on data. And then in our enrichment classes, they start with some of the more challenging curriculum, and the enrichment class, they bring it back, so once they've learned their core curriculum, they're able to team up with other students that are similar in scoring and continue that, that structure. Well, we use CHAMPs for behavior, we're also using Kagan for enrichment, and then we're using the platform that's built in for Bridges' math, as well as Imagine Learning. Okay? No problem. Anybody else? All right? There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. I would like to obviously thank her and her team. Over the course of last year, there was a lot of time invested in this planning process, and Tara and Ryan specifically, you guys were there, Morgan and Catherine were there, we went to ISC4, oh my goodness, 14 times? For half-day sessions with a smaller number of teachers, not everyone on that list was out that time, but there were some off that list, and then our administrative team was there. So, it was some really intensive training, ISC4, Jamie Heron specifically was one of the presenters, Jamie's a former 153 teacher. They had a slide deck of 800 slides? Yeah, I mean, it was, it was extensive over all that time period, we covered all of that information. So, we're really proud of the robust plans that have been created. Thank you again, Tara. At this point, I'd like to call up Ryan Jones, Ryan is our Willow principal, and she will share, share the plan that her team has put together. Ryan?
All right, good evening, everybody, good to see you all. Willow is just a little different, because we have the littles. And what you may not know is that Willow's data is directly tied to Churchill's data. So, we get any student that was at Willow School that has transitioned into Churchill School for our 3rd grade test scores, and that is how we get our targeted designation this year, again, around children with disabilities. Next slide, please. All right, so our priorities align mostly to Churchill's with the increase of 5% on IAR with, for children with disabilities, math increase of 8% on IAR, and then our attendance, we have a chronic absenteeism rate of 28%, and so we're looking to decrease that by 8% this year. I have a couple of slides around our data. So, current proficiency rates for students for 23, 24, for ELA was 26.29%, for math, the same ironic number, I went back and double-checked and triple-checked, it's the exact same number, and then again, our chronic absenteeism rate was 28%.
One thing I'd like to point out to everybody, and you may or may not be aware of this, the state of Illinois, you look at those percentages, and you say, well, that's one out of every four students that is proficient. Obviously alarming. However, it is interesting to point out that the state, for the past 18 months, has been undergoing an extensive review of the cut scores that they use to define proficiency. And one of the big changes is they are going away from a five-tiered system of success, so at the top is exceeds, meets, approaches, so on and so forth, to a four-tiered system, that's one thing. But they are also readjusting what those cut scores for proficiency are, they haven't yet released those numbers. It is coming this week, right? Wednesday? Yeah, the webinar is Wednesday, two days from now, the state superintendent, Dr. Sanders, and his team are going to talk about the new cut scores. I say all that because Illinois, when they looked at, at the nation as a whole, they discovered that Illinois had very severe cut scores, very high cut scores, I think out of the 50 states, we were at about, yeah, it was, it was almost in the top five in terms of the stringent requirements to be deemed proficient. And you say, well, that's not a bad thing. The problem was, they were discovering that students who maybe did not meet were still going on to high school, still being successful in high school, matriculating to college, still being successful in college. And they, so they said, how is it possible that X percent, whatever that number is, are not proficient by our, by our designation, yet are being successful not only in high school but beyond? And so, there's going to be a readjustment. All that said, that's our data, that data needs to get better. So, I just wanted to point that out, though.
Yeah, I think our level of mastery was around in the 70th percentile, and in other states, it's around the 50th percentile. So, it looks really different for Illinois versus other states in the United States. Next slide. Scott did steal my, I was going to talk about that, but thanks, thanks, Scott. So, when you talk about the why, and Tara kind of gave a little bit about this, our proficiency rates for our children with disabilities was very different, 4.26% in ELA, 12.77% in math, and then again, our absentee rate is the same for everybody. So, students across our district are kind of outperforming each other by like four times as much in ELA and double in, in math. All right, so, we rely heavily on our STAR data, which is going away, I can't say I'm not excited about that, everybody, but it, it just kind of gives you kind of a, a gauge of how our students will perform on the state test, which is IAR. So, for our benchmark for reading, students were at 44.8% of proficiency, and then for math, it was 41.2%. What's a little tricky about Willow data, and I've been kind of complaining behind the scenes, is that we haven't had a lot of standardized data, typically because the littles have a hard time testing, right? And so, in kindergarten, they are exposed to the early literacy test, but in the past, they weren't taking math, because you can't take math in STAR without having the proficiency to take the reading, STAR reading test. This year, we were able to gauge how well students did, because we use the accessibility feature of having, if they need the test, read to them for math specifically, it is strictly an accessibility feature and not an accommodation. And so, we were able to get kind of a whole range of how our students were doing, just by using that tool that was accessible to us. This kind of gives the outline of proficiency by grade level, I wanted to pull this out because we specifically need to make sure that our kids are ready when they go to Churchill, right? And so, when we look at the proficiency from 1st grade to 2nd grade, it does drop, and so that's something that we need to look at in our high-leverage practices. So, in order to move the needle on student achievement, we're going to implement universal tier-one practices for instruction, utilize our common core standards to plan and implement targeted interventions, really truly based on what our students need, right? And with the focus on our focal cohort, which is our children with disabilities, and then we just believe that this will create an equitable environment for everything and every student. Our action steps, we went, underwent kind of a master schedule, just underhaul of, of how we really utilize our time at Willow School. So, each class has a specific win block, so that they can get interventions, and they don't miss core instruction, because if you're pulling kids during that time, they aren't getting the exposure that they need to grade-level content. Willow also underwent a small group instruction coaching, and we'll be doing intervention cycle check-ins based on our new data. We did PD, we're continuing PD, coaching cycles, we have partnerships with ISC4 for math coaching, and then utilizing our in-house staff to really kind of hone in on those skills for reading foundational standards, comprehension. And one thing that I learned about being a principal of a K-5 school was that writing about reading is really, really, really important, and that's one of the things that we kind of miss with little people. Grade levels have built-in time in their master schedules to teach those foundational skills, increase the rigor, and then have support from us. One thing that we did was to, we have co-taught classrooms this year, so that was part of kind of that overhaul of our schedules. Kindergarten does not have co-taught, but 1st grade does, and so does 2nd grade, and then continue to review and utilize our data from forefront, and Tara kind of gave you a, a sneak peek about what forefront is, it's just the data platform that we use to keep all of our things there, common assessments, a different Ord and Gillingham assessments that we kind of use to ensure that students are performing, and then the switch to NWEA, which we're all kind of excited about. All right, so, I talked a little bit about where we were moving from hopefully decreasing our attendance or chronic absenteeism to 20%, but overall, when students and families feel a sense of belonging, they are more likely to engage in learning and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Increasing meaningful engagement of families is important in developing their strong commitment and investment in learning. So, one thing that Willow hadn't had was an attendance team. So, having someone to be able to kind of talk through issues, concerns, ways to incentivize, but making it a core value of our school to make sure that we're reaching out to families. Have positive recognition of students and families, and I say families really strongly, because Willow students don't get themselves to school, it's their parents, right? Weekly monitoring of that student attendance, and then regular communication with families that are absent. We get the robo-calls, and they'll call us sometimes, but sometimes, it just takes a very personal phone call to figure out if there's something going on, if a person needs assistance, is there something going on with transportation, whatever it is that we can do to make sure that your kids are here, because kids that are at school learn more. All right, so some best practices and next steps for us involve our stakeholders, use multiple data sources, document progress regularly, one thing we're really great at is the doing, it is, are we doing it very well? How do we know that we're doing it very well? Is it effective when it comes to students? And then maintaining transparent communication, I think one thing Tara talked about is people want to know how their children are doing, and the best way that we can do that is to be transparent in our communication and do it on a more frequent basis. I don't know if you've driven past Willow lately, but this is what it looks like, right? But it really is a microcosm for where we are right now. Willow is under construction physically, but we are also under construction as a school community, so please ask any questions that you may have, I may have an answer for you, I may not, but we are so excited to continue on this journey. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
A couple of things, with your attendance team, are they tracking the reasons?
We do track reasons, I think it's just the follow-up of that, so sometimes, if a parent calls in and they say a child is sick, the first time you call in and say your kid's sick, we take it at face value. But if you're calling in every Thursday and Friday that your child is sick, there's another underlying reason, and you may not want to share that with, you know, the office staff, but if there's a person that's, you know, a trusted person in the school that you have, you might communicate a little differently, and so making those connections to just not look at the surface level of things, but to go a little deeper.
Okay, it's not, my family does have a medical condition, so, does that justify anything? When you talk about the disability, so does that still go, if the child, if it gets a chance?
It does, it, it does. And so, if there are situations where there are long-term issues that we might have to address, that's why we kind of need to be in the loop about them. So, if there's a situation where there's a portion of time that your child might qualify to get services at home, or if we need to kind of create a schedule where there's like partial enrollment, that's something that we can talk about, but without us knowing or being on the same page, that's not something that we would initially do.
If a parent, if they have a child in a medical condition, because you don't know what you're dealing with.
Sometimes, people are upfront, but other times, people are very personal, and so, you know, what you might do is very different from what another parent would do, so, just, yeah.
My second question.
Yes, ma'am.
At J, currently at JH, but when he was at Willow, they, his teachers did, but I had other parents where they did not give out homework, and I remember ag inquiry about Dr. Mitchell, and he's like, he's kind of like optional. So, you guys, without homework, that's gotta be that, is that?
Homework is a tricky thing, right? There are options for practice, right? I think it's when it's tied to the success of a student, for example, a grade, right? If I say, if you get homework, and Natalie gets homework, and Scott gets homework, and you're the only one that does your homework, Natalie gets help with her, from her parent, and then Scott doesn't come ready, it's kind of punitive if you make it, if you don't make it an optional thing at that level. I'm not saying that, my kids had homework, right? And I think that we grew up in a time where homework was part of our culture, but it doesn't necessarily say that kids are going to perform better by getting homework.
If they have an option, just to have extra, extra, they do, they do, they do not, and I know it is out there on the platform, but I believe either the parent, they can also relay to the parents, hey, we do have extra information out there, whether your child is doing good or bad, my child, I know, he's still doing things outside, just to, you know, workforce, just to keep his mind going. So, I think maybe as a parent, just so they can just put it out there, because a lot of parents, you know, that are, you know, don't read, or see this information, just to say, hey, we have, because there are lots of learning games, since kids like to be on these sites, let them learn through the, the games, and again, it is on the website, but maybe just reiterate it to, you know, parents, I mean, because it's a fun learning, it can be fun learning. So, have you guys, maybe, thought about that?
We don't have a mandatory homework policy, I don't plan to implement a mandatory homework policy. Practice. I don't plan to implement a mandatory homework policy. Practice, they do have options for practice, and teachers do send things home that they can practice with. Games, there are a magnitude of things that teachers send, and they usually send it in their school newsletters.
No questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Because, yeah, things have changed, but kind of related to the question just about attendance, things have changed where, you know, you send a kid to school no matter what, but now, especially in the last five years or so, if you got the sniffles, you stay home. I just wonder if there's historical data to show a trend of sorts moving upward because of that? And then, there's mental health days that the state passed some time ago.
Well, it did decrease last year. So, before that, it was at 33%, I think, and it decreased to 28%. And it's a lofty goal to get to 20%. It's my hope. And the one thing that's really tricky about Willow's data, in particular, when it comes to our school report card, is that we only get math and reading growth and math and reading proficiency along with our chronic absenteeism. We don't have the opportunity for our five essentials data, we don't have the opportunity for a science assessment or anything like that because we don't, we don't take those. And so, you know, the science assessment doesn't come until fifth grade, it's fifth and eighth grade. So, both, you know, Churchill and James Hart would benefit from that, but we don't. And so, we really, like, all of the additional points that are in our school report card and whether or not we rate as a school are truly tied to, you know, our math, our reading scores and that, you know, students being at school. Yeah.
I have a question. I know that we're going to be tracking how these plans are working within the schools and within the district, but when would we anticipate if there are successes that showing up in the, in the report card?
Yeah. So, you know, like Scott said, the state hasn't given us any indication of how we are doing yet, and that is because those measurements have changed. And so, we don't even have an idea of, you know, what the scores, the levels will range when it comes to one, two, three, or four, which is proficiency, which is meeting, you know, we don't, you know, truly know. So, we really could have made gains this year, we just won't know yet, and that will take time. And it's also very tricky because the state of Illinois is also very tricky, right? They don't give you the, you know, if you do this, then you get this. There aren't, it's not a math formula for us. And so, there, we very well may be in a situation where we're, I wouldn't say, we're commendable status again, but we still are under this plan for the next three years regardless. And so, that is kind of nice when you think about it because we get additional funding to make sure that we are supporting our students and our school. And it's really eye-opening to see the discrepancy in our learners, the gaps in our learners. And so, it just kind of shines a light on the things that we really should be focusing on as a school. But to kind of answer your question, hopefully, we did make the gains necessary to remove targeted status, but that doesn't mean that we still shouldn't continue to grow in this way.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm leaving. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Ms. Peacock, and your respective teams for all the work you've been doing. Looking forward to seeing some progress and some improvement with our students, and thanks to the audience for your questions. So, it's always good to hear folks from the audience come in and be engaging with presenters and the board and stuff like that. So, thank you very much for your time and input. Let's hear it. Next on the agenda is audience participation, and if any member of the audience would like to come up and address the board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, now's your time to do so. Can you come on up and use the microphone? And please just let us know your name and address, please? Yeah, we've video all of our board meetings.
My name is Titania Stokes. My son is going to eighth grade, James Hart, and I have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure if you guys can answer a couple of them, but Ms. Johnson is here, and maybe I can just talk to her about it. One was about technology. We had, I'm not sure, the technology issue with the grading when they're absent and a grade drops to zero? Should I talk to you about that? Okay. My second question, I noticed it says on, under schedule on the parent portal, academic lab, the academic lab class is graded on a pass slash fail basis. Therefore, the student will not be posting, the staff will not be posting assignments and will not see any information for academic lab. The teacher will contact you if your student is in danger of failing academic lab. Specials, music, shop, technology, art, and health. Due to the nature of the courses, it is best to check the grades weekly. Please also check the calendar to monitor the assignments due to, and the due dates to be sure your student is doing the necessary work in each of the special classes. Please call the teacher if you have any questions. Okay, so, how are we checking this if they're not going to post anything? Or is academic lab and specials, is that together?
They're different things, and the Panther time is the same as Panther four.
So, Panther time is called academic lab?
Same.
Oh, see, I never knew that. Okay, because they call it, is Panther time on the schedule? Okay, so, special classes?
That's the art, music, health, shop.
Right.
Yeah, that's those classes.
So, they are going to be posting grades?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, this academic lab and this special classes are two, two different things. Okay, that kind of threw me through a loop.
And Ms. Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you for pointing that out. I just wrote a note that we need to clarify that because if you, if you are just reading it, academic lab certainly doesn't imply Panther time.
Yeah, I was like, okay.
We'll make sure we get that changed.
Okay, I had another question, but I don't remember what it is. I'll have to check my notes.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I can just address it with.
Anyone else? All right, thanks, everybody. With that, are there any responses to any questions or concerns raised at previous board meetings?
There are none.
All right. With that, superintendent's report.
Committee meetings.
Oh, whoops, sorry. Do we have a report on any board committees or meetings that have taken place since our last board meeting? All right, now superintendent's reports.
Perfect. Thank you. With regard to attendance, I just wanted to touch on that again. I know Ryan and Tara both spoke about that, but it is often overlooked how incredibly important attendance is to student success. Never forget driving down 294, perhaps some of you saw the same billboard I saw, which said, "Two days a month of missed school decreases academic achievement by X percent", right? And that was, that was done by an advocacy group, just talking about the importance of school attendance. But rule number one of learning, you can't learn if you're not present, right? And to your point, Ms. Stokes, there's a lot of valid reasons for kids to miss school, but when it comes to the state's definition under that chronic absenteeism, their response is it doesn't matter what the reason is, the child is not there. So, that's why they track that. Truancy is a different thing altogether. They also track that number, of course. But it's really important, you know, it's, we don't want our families to feel that this is a finger-pointing exercise. You need to do this, you need to get your child here. Of course, that is true, but also, we want to emphasize that we are your partner in that endeavor, right? Like, we want your child in school because we understand the importance of that. So, if there's anything that our team can do, from myself all the way down, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, enlist us to support you. We want nothing but the best for your child, and that starts with having them with us. Willow, Ryan had mentioned construction. So, you know, we have undergone pretty extensive work on our facilities. Last year, replaced the work at Churchill. This year, currently as we speak, the roof at Willow is being replaced, and we are talking about doing the same thing at James Hart. Those are, next year, those projects are major, major work. They are expensive, first of all, and we know that we are financially strapped, but at some point, you know, when you are literally in a classroom teaching and you have water dripping in a bucket next to you, and I see Natalie nodding her head, and I know our, I know our principals, Kevin in the back, he and his team deal with this on a regular basis. So, we are up against the wall to get our building, buildings, but specifically Willow in this case, ready for the start of school next week. I mean, if you drive down Willow Road, you will see that, that lift, you will see tons of equipment currently finishing up that work. And so, they have told us that we will have the building roofing project completed by the end of this week. But, you know, that, that pushes us. Our teachers are back right now, and the staff at Willow is having to work around some inconveniences. Of course, we understand the long-term goal is that it's certainly going to be worthwhile. But I just say all that, I ask for your patience as we navigate this, but we're excited. Dr. Trimberger, our business manager, has done a fantastic job of looking at the facility needs that we have with a fresh set of eyes. I mean, he's now entering year, Eric, what is this, year, year three? Time flies when you're having, time flies when you're having fun. He's entering his third year with us, but Eric has done a great job of identifying and, more importantly, addressing some really, really severe needs, and obviously with the support of our board. This past week, we welcomed 12 new certified staff members. So, we have our new staff orientation each year. 12 is the smallest number we've had, gosh, since I can remember, which is really good news. It speaks to the fact that retention is high, that we're not needing to replace large numbers of people. Included in that 12 are two school psychologists, two social workers. I mean, those are really, really difficult positions to fill, and so, we have all of them filled. I'll be meeting with our, your staff committee, our personnel committee, to talk specifically and look at our data. One of our goals, of course, is continue to, efforts to diversify our staff, but also, I track, every time somebody leaves, I track why, I track where they went. When somebody comes, I track from where. It's all important information for us to look at, and we now have 10 years of that data put together. So, I'll be sharing that with all of you so you can kind of get a detailed look. But bottom line is, we're excited about our 12 new staff members. And Morgan and Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong, Wednesday, they will be back again meeting with mentors, correct? Very good. So, thank you both for leading that effort. And then, on that note, I just want to welcome Morgan and Catherine. So, they are officially in their new roles, although they spent the better part of the spring semester kind of transitioning, at least mentally, meeting with our building administrators on a regular basis, and they'll continue to do that. But Kathy Shafeline, our previous director of curriculum, will certainly be missed, but we're excited to have what used to be a team of four, it's now a team of three in that office, but led by Morgan and Catherine, and I know they're going to do a great job, highly respected by their colleagues in our buildings. But I look forward to the work, and that started this summer with a lot of the development that her principal spoke about. So, welcome to the two of you. That's it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it, that's quite a bit.
That's it, that was.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda items for this evening. The first one is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual customary bills for September 2025. Questions? Pretty straightforward. Next consent agenda items is to set the date and time for the public hearing for the FY26 budget.
Yes, that will be approved in September, so we need to modify our schedule to have the public hearing before our September board meeting, which ties into the next item, changing the time of that meeting as well.
Yep. Next item is change. Okay. Item C, change the time of the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting of September 15th, 2025.
And that will follow, whoops, the new time is going to follow the public hearing to present the budget, so it'll likely be about 7:15, but it will be immediately after the public hearing.
Thank you. Next item is adoption of new revised policies from press 119.
Yes, we introduced these at our last meeting in July. These are the most recent updates from the Illinois Association of School Boards. This one, I think, was 154 pages of revisions, so hopefully, you enjoyed reading that, and look forward to your approval on those.
Any questions from the board? Sorry, I should have asked that for the other items, my apologies. From the audience? All right, if not, we'll move on to the personnel report.
Yes, we've been busy finalizing our staffing. These are not certificated positions that you see here, but several custodial positions, leaves, a lot of moving parts at all times. Mary Kay seated over here does a wonderful job of managing all of our personnel. So, thank you, Mary Kay, for that.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions from the audience? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to our action agenda items. First one is the second payment of July 2025 bills and the first payment of August 2025 bills. Are there any questions about the bills from anyone on the board? Does everyone have their questions answered? All right. Do we have a motion, please?
Move upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorized a second payment of the July 2025 bills and the first payment of the August 2025 bills in the amount not to exceed $742,332.93.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, approval of stipends for 504 case managers.
Couple of things here I'd like to point out. I mentioned a second ago how difficult it is to find social workers, and so, we are fortunate enough to be able to fill two of our social worker vacancies with the new staff. But more importantly, as we did negotiations, and this was an HEA and a board initiative, one of the things that we've tried to do is add stipends into our existing schedule for those hard-to-fill positions. School psych is one that we addressed this year. Social worker, we added a smaller stipend for LCSW, Licensed Clinical Social Worker, and we've done that for national board certification. We've done that for people with doctorates. So, we're trying to address some of those things that are either exceptional in nature or hard-to-fill positions. One of the things that we've done as we look for ways to save money through staffing is when we have a resignation, we ask ourselves, is this a position that can be absorbed? And so, earlier this spring, we had a position in the business office that became vacant. We have reallocated those responsibilities among the existing district office staff, and it's been a heavy lift. But Dr. Trimberger, he's been lifting the heaviest. A lot of work being redistributed, but nonetheless, we will be coming to you to talk about what's appropriate in terms of compensation for some of those people. But tonight, another vacancy that we had was Cece Baloo, who has left the district and is now at Homewood-Fosmore High School. So, congratulations to Cece, but she handled a lot of different things for our district, one of which is very important, and that's managing our 504 caseload. And so, as we, again, made the decision, the difficult decision to not replace Cece's position, those responsibilities still exist. And so, prior to having that position, the social workers in our buildings manage that, and so, they will be doing that again. But I do feel it is going to require extra time from them, perhaps considerable extra time. And so, one of the things that I would like to do to be cognizant of the time that they're going to be spending as 504 case managers, but also to ensure that we are paying a market rate that is appropriate for a social worker in a really hard-to-fill position, and a really important one. I mean, there's not a district around that doesn't talk about social emotional needs of kids and how they've grown. That's certainly true with us as well. And so, having highly qualified social workers is really important. So, long story short, what I'm asking for is the approval of a stipend of $3,000 for each of our each of our social workers to pick up the 504 case management. And again, this is in addition to their other duties, and it will require considerable time outside the school day in order to accomplish everything they need to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board? From the audience? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve a $3,000 stipend for each social worker for the additional duties they will assume as 504 case managers.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the 2025-2026 Parent-Student Handbook.
Each year, we are required to sit down with a group of parents to review our existing policies with regard to student discipline. So this year, I had the pleasure of working with Gail Adams, Jamila Doyle, and Terrell Duffin, three of our parents, and, and they did a fabulous job coming in and meeting with me on a handful of evenings to look at our existing policy. And what you have here in your board packet is actually a modified version of our Parent-Student Handbook that we've had in the past, that is more descriptive, but that came with their input, and also the input of all of the administrative team seated in the back. So thank you for your help in accomplishing this pretty big task. So we're asking for formal approval of that at tonight's meeting.
I guess, a couple thoughts, again, thanks to Gail, Jamila, and Terrell, and then all the district staff who went through this and stuff like that. I mean, I looked through this, and I think it's very comprehensive, and I think it's a really good guide for members of the community, parents, and the students, I think, too, probably would benefit from taking a look at what's in the contents of this document. I think it definitely lays out rules, expectations, and so on for, for everybody. So I think, I think it's a really good document, I think it's definitely worthwhile that folks take a look at it and spend the time talking to their children about it, and what's in there, and what, what we expect them, and hopefully what the parents expect of them as well. If there's any other...
Do you have any way on the web to read this?
Yes, yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a consent agenda item right now. Dr. McAllister has brought it to the board, where, once we approve it this evening, assuming we approve it, then it will be released to the...
It would be on the website.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. No other comments or thoughts? If not, oh, sorry.
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the 2025-2026 Parent-Student Handbook as attached.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the school improvement plan for Willow School.
Yes, you heard the details tonight from Ms. Jones, Willow principal. We are asking for your formal approval of the school improvement plan, which will be in effect for the next three school years.
Any additional questions or comments?
Nope.
If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the school improvement plan for Willow School as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the school improvement plan for Churchill School.
Same thing for Churchill School. Thank you to Ms. Peacock for her presentation.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the school improvement plan for Churchill School as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next item is employment.
Yes, you'll see five individuals recommended for employment this evening. Brianna Seves, evening custodian at Willow, Tanya Smith, ISS supervisor at James Hart, and then Ms. Johnson, incredible job. So you look at these three positions, two math teachers and a Spanish teacher, and it's hard enough finding math teachers at any level, much less in middle school, she didn't find one, she found two, and a Spanish teacher. So Kim, great job. But we are looking forward to hiring Molly Sexton, eighth-grade math teacher at James Hart, Vernon Holloway, seventh-grade math teacher at James Hart, and Emily Korenich, a Spanish teacher at James Hart.
Great news. Any questions or comments from the board? From the audience? Or do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation that the administration, of the administration, that the Board of Education approve the employment of Brianna Seves effective August 11th, 2025, and Molly Sexton, Vernon Holloway, and Emily Korenich, and Tanya Smith, effective August 18th, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, condition only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report, and upon receipt no later than August 20th, 2025, of evidence of proper legal, legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Papelka?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next item is discussion items. Does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss on the board?
No.
Is there, Mr. Secretary, is there any written communication to the board?
I am in possession of nothing at this time, so no.
All right, thank you.